This conference will now be recorded.
Planning and zoning commission meeting for Monday, May 15th. And clerk, can we call the roll, please?
Member Ray.
Here.
Member Varga.
Yeah.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Herger.
Here.
And vice chair here.
Here. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into public comment, there is a, that one of our members has wanted us to consider the possibility of meeting at another time than eight o'clock on Monday mornings. I think the pivotal part of this is probably staff. We would have to keep it in the same weekly cycle each month. There might be a possibility of doing it on Tuesday morning because we do that when we have Monday holidays, or later in the day on Monday or Tuesday. And I wanted to open this just a discussion among us as to what feels good to everybody. I'll state for me, I can do Monday, Tuesday morning, afternoon, evening, that'd be fine. Steven, you said the same thing?
Yeah. For my feeling, Monday, I gotta get all my lights, turn on my lights for everything. So Monday afternoons or Tuesdays afternoons, much better for me, but you know, I'll work with what I have to do.
I feel the same way. Monday morning is very difficult, if not impossible for me. So if we could do it Monday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon, that would be great, right?
At one time, we met on the same week in every month, and it was on a Monday morning. Eight thirty is nicer than eight. I'm an early riser, but it's just complicating. But would a morning on a day other than Monday work for you guys that have a regular job?
Yes.
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 Tuesday morning would be pretty fun, yeah.
Tuesday would be better for sure, like an eight thirty.
Eight thirty and nine thirty would be nicer.
Yeah, agreed.
So the reality of it, though, is that we're probably the more flexible, the five of us, than the staff. And why don't, why don't we start right with Christie, who probably has the most affixed schedule? What, what would be flexible in your schedule?
Normally, normally on Tuesday, I have a staff meeting in another city, but I can try to make it work. So Tuesday would be all right.
Okay. Corey?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any set meetings, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays. My meetings are sort of flexible, so whatever looks to them will work.
Lynn's not here. Kelly, can you speak for town staff?
I think we're pretty flexible with, you know, whatever you decide, we can make these work, so.
So, so I think we're definitely move it to a day other than Monday. Now, morning or afternoon, what's, what's the wish? Again, I don't have a, I defer to the, the people who are running businesses and have to.
I'm good for Tuesday morning. I'm good for Tuesday morning. That'd be great.
Tuesday morning's good for me, too.
Tuesday morning.
Like nine?
Nine o'clock sounds nice, though.
Yeah. Yeah.
A little later?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, babe?
That works. That's, that's easy.
Okay. That's, I, excuse me, Tara, are you okay? Because you're not sitting up here, I'm sorry. Tuesday would work?
Yeah.
Okay, so is it agreed, Tuesday at nine? Do we have to have a motion, or do we just do it?
It's just consensus is fine.
Consensus, okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next month's meeting was scheduled for Tuesday anyway, so we're just moving it an hour later. Excellent, thank you. Now we have the opportunity for public comment. Anybody who has any comment regarding planning and zoning matters, other than anything that's on today's agenda, we don't have any review items, but please step forward and make public comment. This is your time, Terry.
Terry Brown Hubbard, I saw, Tuesday morning is good for me. So just so everyone gets familiar with my face, I come to most of the meetings, and I'm a keen observer of the meetings and what goes on in town. And I have a lot of history about the town, which I'll tell you some secrets.
Thank you, Terry. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we close public comment. Now we have minutes from two meetings. I think it was in everybody's package, and you've hopefully had a chance to look at those minutes. And if there's no comment, ask for a motion to approve. We need to do them one at a time, first the January 23 meeting.
Make a motion to approve the January 23 meeting.
Well, inasmuch as I didn't have them in my package, looking at them for the first time, does anyone who's read through them found any issues with them?
I didn't.
I'll second.
You need to third?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we do the February 21 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 21 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 21 minutes.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Thank you. All in favor? The main item we have on today's agenda is the selection of the chairman and vice chairman for the next 12 months. Kelly, can you take charge of this portion?
I'm going to catch out ballots. Please mark one candidate on here and indicate your name at the bottom, and I'll pick all those up.
Are we voting separately for?
For one person per chair.
Per chair.
For chair, and then I'll do vice chair after that. Okay, now we went up. We've got Kerry with three votes, and Hutchins with one, and Herger with one. You are the chair.
I couldn't speak up.
Excuse me, we had three votes for Kerry, one vote for Hutchins, one vote for Herger, so it was like you won.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we will do vice chair. And the same deal, just choosing one. Okay, we've got four votes for Hutchins and one vote for Varga. Ms. Hutchins, you are vice chair. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the discussion of ordinance review bar.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
So I apologize, the backup wasn't provided in the agenda. It's my fault. The last P&amp;Z meeting, as you may recall, we had an in-depth discussion on the floor area ratio. And for the other new board members currently in the towns code, the floor area ratio is, there's some areas where it's a little inconsistent, and we were doing, trying to do some cleanup and make it consistent, sometimes make it a little bit easier to understand how it's written in the code. So we had a couple meetings, P&amp;Z, to discuss some changes to floor area ratio. So what I'm going to ask, it's all right, Mr. Chair, is to bring it back in the June meeting. What I would ask is, we'll try to get it out ASAP because it is a bit in the weeds. You may want to take a look at it to get an understanding of some of the issues in the land development code, which is online, to see, you know, what's going on with the bar in town. So, that's all right. We'll get it out as soon as possible. We have the draft ordinance, but I probably need to explain some things and how we got to over.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that, is that, is that affect, is it blanket over the entire town?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be. So it's in a draft ordinance form, and so this board's decision would be an advisory decision, and then it would go to the town commission for two readings to be approved, if it's approved.
Could you give us some minor clarification when you say it's inconsistent?
So there's, for example, there's a provision in the code that talks about the, for purposes of floodplain, and when you're developing your, your lowest floor elevation. In that provision, it discusses that you're allowed to have, I think, a garage and something else below plain, and those don't count towards your floor area ratio. And there was a concern, I believe, and Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, or Commissioner Hutchinson, correct me if I'm wrong, but in that provision, it discounted those from the far because they're not at your per-floor level, but then, so then it was allowing some houses to be extremely built up, and there was a concern because of that, that we wanted to make sure that those are included in far so that we don't see that. And I think there was another concern, there's some language that wasn't changed when other changes were made, so some of those cleanup issues.
Thank you, okay, that's a good example, yes.
What has really impacted the town and has been the FEMA change in the elevations. And if you've seen any of the newer houses, and Steven certainly knows in his building, they're having to bring in trucks loads of fill and build retaining walls in order to meet the new elevations. And that's kind of, now that we're trying to pick up any inconsistencies that have been impacted by that change and other changes.
And there's, there's one other example that I can provide is, there's some exclusions from the floor area ratio in terms of, I believe, unenclosed decks and balconies. And there was a concern that around town, we're seeing some houses being built with these unenclosed areas, so they're excluded from far, and a concern that perhaps in the future, someone might enclose that without going through the proper building purpose process. And now they've got a far that substantially exceeds would be, would be allowed by the code because they've enclosed what was excluded from the far. So it was kind of to put some limitations on that, so we don't see these huge patios that at some point get closed in, so.
Do you really think that would happen, though? You know, if someone's doing that, they're going against the code, so.
We were having that same discussion with the planning and zoning board members, and I think part of the discussion was, should we be concerned about that or not? And so that was what their board kind of thought, like, I think we put a 500-square-foot limitation on excluding it from the far.
There, there seem to be, these things often get flagged when you see a project and say, wow, that was a little different. And there's one that had a huge second-floor balcony, almost as much area as the rest of the second floor, that was excluded from far. I call it balcony, but it was really a room without walls. It had a full roof and everything. And then there's another one that, similar on, on the ground level, so that's. And then, these are things for us to discuss and, and decide what we want to recommend to the town commission. Christie, since you have the floor, and we have, we're almost done, it's 20 past. Is there anything that you want to kind of go over with new commissioners and choose and don'ts? And how, you mentioned getting things online, where to, where to find stuff?
Right. So the, the town has ordinances, within the court of ordinances, is the land development code, and that's where this board primarily focuses, in the land development code. If anything's going to be changed to lay development code, it has to come before this board first, and then you make an advisory recommendation to the town commission. Then the town commission would change the code by ordinance, which requires two meetings, so two meetings to actually accomplish that. The other charge that you really have, well, you have two other main charges. The other charge is you are reviewing applications for development. And as you know, it comes before this planning and zoning commission for an architectural review. And you are looking at it, and it's set out in the code, what your criteria you're looking at to determine whether or not you're going to approve a development. The criteria is set out in the code, and because you have set criteria that was set by the town commission, when those development applications come before you, it's a quasi-judicial hearing. That means you're really sitting at the, as the judge, listening to the evidence presented, and then making a decision whether to approve it, to approve it with conditions, or to deny it, or perhaps table it if you need more information. The other main charge you have, which is something that will be coming up very soon, is the town's comprehensive plan. It has an update that's required in April of next year. And if you're not familiar, the town has a comprehensive plan, and that really controls, that's essentially your charter for all development in the town. So all development must be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And then, to implement your comprehensive plan is your land development code. And that's where all the details are, to implement the policies and objectives in your comprehensive plan. So by April of next year, we have to update the comprehensive plan. And this board is really charged with making the initial changes to the comprehensive plan and recommending those to the town commission. So we'll be, I'm working with the town manager to, usually you utilize a consultant who will talk with each of you about your thoughts, about what you would like to see in the comprehensive plan, what you don't want to, what you'd like to see changed in the comprehensive plan. So that'll be another process that this board is going to be going through. And it sets out really your guidelines and future planning for the town. So those are your main charges under the land development code. Two main issues, and I believe the clerk will be handing out a handbook that we just worked on. The handout, or handbook, covers Florida sunshine law, Florida public records law, and some of the ethical issues that you need to be aware of when serving on this board. The sunshine law, if you're not aware, the sunshine law requires that this meeting, when there's two or more board members present, to discuss an issue that would come before the board for consideration, it requires us to publicly notice the meeting, to allow the public to be present, to take minutes of the meeting, and then also to provide public participation before you take action. So what that prohibits is two or more board members having a discussion outside a public meeting about an issue that will foreseeably come before you for action. So by example, if there's a development that's going to be coming before you for consideration, two or more of you could not meet outside a public meeting and discuss your thoughts on the proposed development. That discussion has to happen in a public meeting. So that's the sunshine law, very basic. It goes into a little bit more detail in the handbook. The other law that's applicable is public records law. Now, it doesn't come up much for you because usually you're not as involved as perhaps the town commission with written correspondence going back and forth. But the public records law is really anything that is written format, or even audio, video, that deals with official town business is a public record. And it means that anyone can get access to it. So if the clerk emails you and says, hey, we need, you know, you to come to a special meeting, are you available for this date? When you respond back and say, yeah, I'm available for that date, that email or that text is a public record. So what I recommend, to the extent you can do it, is try to make sure that your emails go back to the town, because emails are always kept on the town's system indefinitely. So if someone did a public records request for all of the chairs' emails to the town clerk, the town clerk can do a search of all the emails, and they would all show up there. Where you run into problems, if you start emailing to other town officials on private emails about town business, technically those emails are public record. And if they're not kept on the town system, if someone does a public records request, they may ask to see the public records on your private emails or your private texts. So the conservative approach is always make sure that your communications come through the town system. If you do it on your own devices, and it's between you and, say, a town commissioner, it's about town business, technically that's a public record, and if we get a public records request, we're going to have to ask you to check your cell phone, check your tablets, check your email for any other public records that you may have created or received. Which takes me back to the sunshine law, to just be cautious. If you use social media on, to discuss town business, social media can also be public records. Social media can also be a sunshine law violation. If two or more board members are discussing an issue that will likely come before you, and you discuss that in social media, one, it's a public record, and two, you may have violated sunshine. So be careful with, if you use social media, make sure you understand who's all on social media, because there's been cases where one commissioner talks in a trail of social media down here about an issue, and another commissioner comes along and doesn't know that a discussion has already occurred, and they start talking about it. So when you print out the whole social media post, it looks like two commissioners were talking about an issue together. So just be careful. If you don't use social media, that's the easiest thing. I don't use social media because it's always concerning. The other thing with public records, your public record could end up on the Palm Beach Post. So before you fire off an all-caps email, you may want to think about it and take a, you step away, take a deep breath, I do it often, and wait, and just keep it professional. If you're talking about town business, and if it shows up on the Palm Beach Post, you're fine. If you kept it professional, it says all-caps emails that show up on the Palm Beach Post, you've got to be careful of. That's public records, sunshine. The other thing that's in there is ethics. You are subject to the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics and the State of Florida Code of Ethics. Palm Beach County Code of Ethics is always stricter. So the first place that I look if there's an ethics issue is the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics. The main ethics things you have to be considered before you even come to a meeting and discuss an item is you want to make sure that you don't have a conflict of interest. If it's a house you're, you know, obviously building, if it's a house right next to your house, if it's something that, it's just on your street, these are all issues that you need to be thinking about because you may have a conflict of interest. And you need to reach out to the clerk or myself as soon as possible so that we can look at it and make sure that there's not a conflict. Because if there's a conflict under the Palm Beach County rules, you can't even participate in the discussion. Absolutely can't vote, but you can't even sit up here and talk about it. You also can't show up and provide public comment on the item. So as soon as you recognize that there might be a conflict, let us know. That's the only time you're prohibited from voting. The rest of the time you're up here, you always have to vote. Now, in quasi-judicial hearings that you'll have, if there is the appearance of a conflict, you can actually recuse yourself from that if you believe there's an appearance of a conflict. But otherwise, you have to vote unless you have a conflict. There's other rules that the handbook goes about into, the gift rules, you have to be careful with gifts. You might have to report a gift. And there's also contractual relationships with the town. I don't think we necessarily have that, but read through those ethics issues. I think they've already done the training. The training through Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics is good, it's online. You've got, you know, a variety of information. And the reason I want you to bring up any ethics issues sooner rather than later is sometimes the ethics issues, you can really get in the weeds with the rules, and sometimes we have to call the Commission on Ethics and talk with them, and sometimes they have to actually do an opinion. And if they do an opinion, it usually takes 30 days. So the sooner we know about an issue, the better. And they are so detailed right now, it's very fact-specific to every issue. So just give us a heads up, and we'll work with you to figure out if there's a conflict. Besides that, I don't know if I've missed anything that you can think of. Those are the main issues. I will provide you guys with my contact information. I'll send out an email to the whole board later and just give you my contact information. If you ever have questions, give me a call. The town clerk's also really familiar with a lot of these issues. She's done a lot with public records and sunshine and ethics, so reach out to either of us, and obviously the town manager, and just, you know, happy to talk with you about it.
Anybody have questions?
I do. Do we get town emails? Have I missed that?
Yeah, use the mic.
I'm sorry, do we, well, we receive town emails?
I don't think they set you up with town emails, but you will receive an email, like if there's an upcoming meeting to make sure that there's a forum. You'll get an email with the agenda, those types of things. And as long as your communication is through the town's email system, it'll always be retained. So you don't have to worry about, if you're using your own device, deleting those emails because the town will always have them.
Got it. So if, like, I were to email Rick, would I just copy Kelly on there so that, okay?
Yeah, right, but to show.
Unless you're emailing me to wish me a happy birthday, if it has anything to do with this, you can't.
Just, okay, got it.
And if you've got any questions, just call one of us and talk through with them.
Cool.
Also, our names are all posted on the website, along with our email address, so whatever email you want there, tell Kelly, so.
Got it.
Then anybody in the public can email you. That doesn't mean you have to respond. But, you know, and again, I've been here five years, and I don't think I've ever gotten an email from that email address being posted, so don't, don't worry about being inundated.
Yeah. You usually won't get a lot up here. One thing to. One thing to also be aware of, sometimes if a development's coming before you, a representative of the developer might reach out to you. Usually that only happens if there's perhaps, it's controversial or something. I know in the past, this board sort of had a internal policy that they wouldn't talk to representatives before the issue came before them. And that's a very conservative approach and you can do that. What that does is it makes sure that then you don't have any ex parte communications. And an ex parte communication is communication with you outside a public meeting by someone who's going to come before you for a development review. Like I said, those are quasi judicial hearings, so you're sitting as the judge. And judges usually can't have communications with the parties outside the hearing. So in that case, before that hearing, we will ask if there's been any ex parte communication with each member. If there is, you have to disclose it. And that's just to keep the hearing fair so that everybody knows, the town included, and the applicant knows what all went on behind the scenes before we came to the hearing. So it's out there in the public, they know what has happened. You want to make sure there's no prejudgment before the development comes before you because you are required to sit as an impartial hearing board, listen to the evidence that's presented in the hearing, and make your decision based on that. So it's up to you how you want to do that. It's a conservative approach to deny and not allow any ex parte communication. But you can also do it and hear what they have to say, you just have to come to the hearing and disclose it. That also includes if you want to go visit the site and take a look at it, you should also disclose, oh, I drove to the site and I took a look at it. If you have any discussions with myself or Corey or Gorman or Planner about the development, those should also be disclosed because technically in those hearings, the town is a party. So if you have a separate discussion with the town, you should disclose that as well. That way the hearing will be fair and we don't create an issue where someone might challenge whether or not it was a fair hearing.
Thank you. Christie, one question for you as well. We have the FAR discussion, right, and the master plan coming up as well. Back in February, not going specific about it, but you had a proposed code amendment, right, that came up that was denied, right? So does that denial then go, two questions here. First, is that, first question is, how often do you have code amendment proposals typically through the course of the year? And secondly, is the, is that just then a recommendation to the council? At the end of the day, the denial that occurred, was that a recommendation to the council?
Yes.
Just to familiarize myself with the system a little bit, please.
Yeah, what you brought up is another thing that is, an application that may come before you. Anyone can propose a text amendment to the land development code. And what they're asking is to change some language in the land development code. They propose it, they bring it for you, and they'll tell you why they want that. It is an ordinance change, so this board sits in its advisory capacity to review that text amendment, and then you make a recommendation to the town commission. The town commission can agree with you or they can, you know, not agree with you, that's, that's their authority. So that's what you would do. I think it was a very new thing for this board and for the town commission. I don't think we've seen a text amendment in the town for years that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So it was a little bit of a surprise. In other cities where you have sort of a much more in-depth land development code, it's not unusual to hear a text amendment every couple of months. But this one was a little different, so I don't, we don't see a lot of those.
Okay, thank you, yep.
I know I've thrown a lot at you. Read through the handbook if you have questions, feel free to give us a call and talk through it. If you want to learn more about the sunshine law and the public records law, the Florida Attorney General has a very good website under, it's another open government section. They have opinions you can read, they actually have a manual you can read. If you're having trouble sleeping, I recommend that, so. But otherwise, we can usually answer most of the questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is, the next section is commissioner comments, which we each have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, if there's anything that hasn't been addressed or that you'd like to see addressed in the future, or just the general discussion. Because again, we're under the sunshine, so this is the opportunity to kind of, for us to talk among ourselves with, and it's not subject to public comment. So it's really our, our little time at the end of the meeting. So I open it up, does anybody have any commissioner comments?
I do not. Well, I, I guess it's a comment for Christie, I have a question. The comprehensive plan that needs to be updated in April, is there like a working draft of comments people have made from the board already? Like, so, we haven't started that process yet?
We have not started the process. The comprehensive plan, if you just Google Ocean Ridge Plan, it will come up and you can review it online.
Cool.
Yeah.
As I recall, the last time we did this, the consultant really walked us through the process because it's a little technical.
It is.
And they, and that's why the town hires a consultant. And I don't think you've selected the consultant yet, other than the one that did it last time did a real good job, so that'd be my comment.
That's all for me.
Anyone else got a, Dave?
I just, I just have a request, inasmuch as I was missing part of the package I should have had because I was out of town and other things coming up too. If it all could be included in the package rather than an email where you can download it, that would be very helpful. I appreciate, we appreciate that.
Stephen, anything?
I'm just taking it in today.
Just excited to be part of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just want to make one overall comment. We're a new planning and zoning commission. We have a new town commission, a new town manager in Lynn. We have one of the new town commissioners sitting here with us. And I think the intention here, the voters of Ocean Ridge and the community is that we become a functional town, a place that things get done, and we're all part of that. And I very much want to welcome it. And we want to make it so that we're representing the community and the interests of the town while making it as smooth running for those who are applicants to go through the process. And I very much am so pleased to be here with you all and thanks for serving. You'll, you'll know after a little bit that, you know, it's, how nice it is to have the town staff to support us in what we do and, and keep us on the right path. So, thank you. And unless anybody else has something, we'll call the meeting to adjourn? Yes, we have a question.
As we adjourn, I would like to make a group photo of you guys.
Well, thank you.
After you, Ben.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting adjourned, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, everybody stay right where you're at except get closer.
Stand up.